Okay. Let's get started. Welcome to the Murray City Planning Commission meeting. It is November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's six thirty-three P. M. I'm just going to introduce everybody up here. To my left, we have Commissioners Travis Nay, Ned Hacker, Vice Chair Lisa Milkovich. I'm Jake Pearson. To my right, we have Commissioners Maren Patterson and Michael Henry. And then from staff, we have Zachary Smallwood, who's standing up, and Mustafa Al Janabi. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones. This meeting is being recorded and livestream online at MurrayCityLive.com and Facebook.com/MurrayCityUtah. There's going to be a public comment section during the meeting. During this time, the public is welcome to come up to the podium and make a comment. When you do come up, we will ask that you state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. And we ask that you speak into the microphone so not only we can hear you, but so the people at home watching could also hear you. Those watching remotely, if you would like to submit a comment, you can do that. But the only way you can do that is emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. If you make a comment on a video on Facebook or otherwise, we will not be able to see that. So please, if you want to make a comment remotely, that is the only way to do it. Okay, unless I, unless anybody has anything else, we'll get started on the agenda. Our first item is approval of minutes from our October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. We did discuss this in our pre-meeting and we did make a few small recommendations and changes. But other than that, unless we need to have discussion, we can have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Nay. Do we have a second?
A second for the motion?
You have a second from Vice Chair Milkovich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, our agenda item number two is conflict of interest. Does anybody here have a conflict of interest for the agenda items tonight?
No.
And neither do I. We have no findings of facts, so we're going to move right on to number four, cottonwood security. And this is going to be presented by Mustafa Al Janabi. Mustafa.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's start with this. So this is a conditional use permit for a light-duty metal fabrication and construction contractor. This is the location of it. As you can see, the site is actually highlighted in the light blue and the actual office slash shop is located in the dark blue side. Let's see, the location is in the MG zone as highlighted over there. And for that, it is a general manufacturing. So this is a picture of where the shop would be slash office. This will be the entrance of it. It'll be, the entrance should be on the forty-five-hundred south. And it would be through a private entrance through a couple of parking lots. This is another picture of the property. And over here, we have the office and the shop. So the shop would be on the yellow area and the orange would be the office as shown. So based on this and based on what presented, this is what's presented by the applicant. There is around twelve spaces for parking with an overflow parking space. What is required by the code, according to my calculations, would be a total of seventeen parking spaces. Six parking spaces would be for the office. And then eleven parking spaces would be for the workshop. The shop is made, as I said, for fabrication, so it'll be steel, iron, and so on. As stated by the applicant, there'll be nine people total working. There'll be one available truck for transportation of goods and people. And I would, Zach wanted me to mention that it's a garbage, enclosed garbage disposal. So that's a very good area, which is, if I could. Which is right over here. Let's see. Based on that, based on the findings, the proposed purpose for the metal fabrication contractor should be allowed, according to land use code of three, thirty-four ninety-four and sixty-six hundred in the MG zone, based on the approvals. And based on that, based on the three findings over here, the staff would recommend the approval for this conditional use permit, based on those four conditions. Any questions, comments, concerns?
No questions? Okay, thank you, Mustafa. Appreciate it. Is the applicant present? Could you please come up to the podium, state your name and address for us?
My personal address for the shop.
Either one.
Zach French. The shop address there is seventy-nine West forty-five-hundred South, unit number twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Have you had a chance to review these four conditions?
Yes.
Perfect, and will you be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any additional information you'd like to share with the commission?
I don't think so.
Okay, do any commissioners have any questions for applicant? No questions? Thank you, you can have a seat. Appreciate it. We're now going to open up the public comment period. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comment to three minutes. And if you're watching remotely, the only way you can make a comment is by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov.
Hi, my name's Tristan Hughes. I live at forty-seven oh six South Hill House Cove. So that is the residence that is right behind where that suggested stop is to be. The reason for my comments is because currently, right now, there's a few shops that are on each side of that building or each side of that place. And right now, there's not too big of a concern because occasionally, those shops do operate at late hours or very early hours that have been either waking up extremely early because of noise or have been very much later into nine P. M. hours at night. Once again, not a huge concern because it's one-off occasions. However, my concern would be if we're having metal work done in those earlier hours or later hours again. Or because those townhomes there are all rooftop townhomes means that people spend their summers on the roof deck. If there is any debris that is coming out from the shop, that is downwind of us. That's all I'd like to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments for people present? Zach, have we got any emails? Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, we will close the public comment period. And we could probably talk about the noise and hours.
Topics I'd like to talk about.
Zach, can you talk about noise ordinances for us briefly, putting in the spots?
No, you're good. Sorry, I was explaining to Mustafa how to address these questions and then you asked me to do it, so I'm just gonna do it. I'll do it, it's okay. So there are quiet hours in the city, so anything, I believe, from ten P. M. to six or seven A. M. are quiet hours. So if you are experiencing anything between those hours, always, feel free to give us a call. I know that six A. M. is pretty early. But those are not state, but county-regulated hours. But we are cognizant of that. And we can have the applicant address what hours of operation he plans on having, if you'd like to do that. As far as debris and things like that, those will be addressed by, so all the departments in the city review these applications before they come to the planning commission. And so, for example, the power and fire department have already looked at these plans. They're already aware of them. And so when they apply for a business license, they'll go out and inspect and make sure that they're meeting all the fire department requirements so that you don't have shards of metal flying anywhere. Because that, that could, and, and Cottonwood Security has worked in Murray previously at a different location and is moving back to Murray. We've had a pretty good relationship with them before. But yeah, it's definitely something that we'll pay attention to as well.
Thank you. I would like to have the applicant come back up, but before I do that, does anybody else have anything we want to discuss before that?
I brought in pre-meeting discussions about noise and hours of operations, so I think they're being addressed.
Okay, thank you. Could we have you come back up, please state your name and address once more?
Zach French, seventy-nine West twenty, seventy-nine West forty-five-hundred South.
Thank you. Could you just maybe briefly explain what you're going to do? And maybe relate that to if there's any going to be any noise when you're, what hours you think you're going to be operating?
Sure. So we do, our primary thing is railing, so cutting and welding metal. Our hours are pretty consistent, eight to four-thirty, Monday through Friday.
Any questions for the applicant? None? Thank you, you can have a seat again.
Thanks.
Okay. We can have more discussion or we can entertain a motion.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Please.
So Zach, I'm, I'm, my knowledge in cutting and welding is minimal. So I'm assuming anything, any concerns around sparks or electrical needs or heating or venting or fire, all that is taken care of in the licensure process through the multiple departments involved, right?
Yes, that's a hundred percent correct. Because yeah, we, none of us up here are experts in, in welding and fire and all that fun stuff.
What?
You don't know what I do.
Hey, you do. I do know what you do. No, it's okay. And so, yeah, it's, that will be thoroughly reviewed by the fire department and all the other departments as well. Business licensing does a really good job at farming these out to the appropriate departments.
And then any ord, noise ordinances that are established by the county will be imposed here, right?
Yep, precisely.
So cutting metal causes noise and needs to be within the county regulations.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the operation of metal fabrication and contract construction services business at the property address seventy-nine West forty-five-hundred South, number twenty-four, subject to the four conditions.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Patterson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Nay. Somebody, will you do a roll call though?
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nay.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry. I almost called you Richards, I apologize. You're still in my thing. Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
And Chair Pearson.
Yes. Okay, that passes, congratulations. Now we look forward to seeing your business in Murray. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number five, skincare ink. And this is going to be presented by Mustafa Al Janabi as well.
Hey, it's me again. So with this, it's fairly, fairly simple and very quick, to be honest. The application is for a massage therapist, two new massage therapists and already existing business. This would be the location of it. The highlighted light blue is the actual location of the entire office. And the dark blue is where the new massage therapist plus where Skin Care Inc. is located. It is located, the R and B zone, which is a multi-use commercial slash residential. But for this one, it's a multi-use commercial. As stated, it is on nine hundred east, so this road will be accessed from nine hundred east. This would be the location of the new office and the little circled office is where it's going to be. The applicant has two rooms and it is, it will be within those two. It is a utilized space of one hundred and ten square foot. This would be the entrance of it. This is where the office is located. From pictures, this would be the parking space around. The total parking space for this location is fifty-four in total. While for the, based on the calculations that I did, it only requires one parking space for the new office of one hundred and ten square foot. This is the extra space that are, that is across from the office, located. Let's see, this is a aerial view of it. And track some more notes, there's nothing else that I would see. So for the findings, the property and the business proposed for massage therapy, it is under land use code of sixty-two ninety-six, which would be allowed in the R and B zone. Based on these findings, the staff would recommend the approval for the plan, for the conditional use permit, based on those three conditions. Questions, comments, concerns?
Go ahead.
Simple question. On the, when you were looking at the floor plan, you said new office, but this is an existing business, business and just an expansion of the.
Correct, excuse my, yes, it is. Excuse my language, it is a, a new, and it is a business, an already existing business. So there's no new office going to be in there, it's just.
And, and the reason why they have to get this conditional use is because they all have to get their own business license, is that correct?
Correct, it would be a separate business license.
I just, some will not be happy with my feelings that I feel obligated to say that. I know the city code is being met with what this site has more parking than needed. And the city code states that they only need one additional parking. But I have to acknowledge that that's a little ridiculous because a therapist and their client, there will absolutely be two cars. I'm not concerned about this application. There are fifty-four parking spots, they're fine. But the parking code's a little interesting.
I live right over by this area and I'll tell you, the only time you see any cars parked on nine hundred east is during the farmer's market on Sunday morning. And outside of that, you never see anybody parked there. It's a, it's a dangerous place to get out of your automobile because cars are usually doing sixty miles an hour and a forty, so.
There is no concerns with this application, it's just the code's a little silly.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Can you please come up to the podium, please state your name and address?
Hi, thank you for being here. I'm Cheryl Edvilsen and my address, grasshopper use of the business, sixty-two sixty-eight South nine hundred east, suite two hundred.
Perfect, thank you for being here. Have you, you put those conditions back up real quick. Have you read these three conditions?
Yes, I have.
That they're going to show on the board?
Yeah.
Perfect. And will you be able to comply with those?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
The second one's already taken care of, the fire chief came in the other day. It's all ready to go.
Awesome. Is there any other additional information you'd like to share with the commission?
No, they just have it, I was like, I wanted to know, they have two rooms, but we have that circled one room. The two are shut, they, they work different hours. The two massage therapists work two, they work separate hours and there's one room that has two rooms in the, I just wanted to point that out. That's when I was reading through this, I saw it.
So are you saying that they're going to be occupying that just one room circle, is that correct?
Right, at different times.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's all.
Do any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant? Okay. You can go have it and have a seat, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We're gonna open up the public comment period. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And if you are watching remotely, you can make a comment, but the only way you can do it is by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Is anybody present that would like to make a comment? I don't see anybody here. We're just going to give it another thirty seconds to see if someone wants to email in.
Thirty seconds is a long time.
I know. I've been staring at you for ten already.
Happy, happy, counting.
You know, I want to give them a chance.
I know. I'm trying, I keep refreshing.
We have none?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment period. Well, we can have a discussion or we can entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, go ahead, Mr. Hacker.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that the planning commission approve conditional use permit to permit a, to allow massage therapist business at the property address sixty-two sixty-eight South nine hundred east, suite two hundred, subject to the three conditions listed.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Hacker. Do we have a second?
I'd like the second.
We have a second from Vice Chair Milkovich. Can we have a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Nay.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
And Chair Pearson.
Yes. Okay, congratulations, that is approved. We're gonna move on to our next agenda item. It is number six and it is something that I don't have right in front of me. It is land use text amendment and it's going to be presented by Zachary Smallwood.
Yes, thank you. So I don't have very many slides for this, I pretty much have findings and a motion. So I'm just going to kind of explain it, so the.
I'm gonna interrupt, sorry. If anybody's here, don't feel obligated to stay. I mean, you can stay if you'd like, but please feel free to walk out.
Yeah, because this gets real boring.
This is where we make the sausage.
I keep meaning to tell you that at the beginning of the meeting, that we need to add it to the script, that once your app, once your, your thing is done, you're free to go.
I should do, yes, I will try to, I'll try to.
And I apologize, I keep forgetting. Yeah. Okay, so, yeah. Over at least the past five years that I've been here, five and a half now, crazy. So we have brought a, a, a number of contractors. Tonight was an example of one. He had another land use code, but the contractor side of it. We've brought a lot of those through as conditional use permits. And previous planning commissioners, current planning commissioners have asked, you know, these, these are pretty much rubber stamp, pretty much. There usually is not a lot that goes into these, into contractor uses. Also, contractors are pretty much permitted in every other zone, including like our commercial district. It is office only, but they're pretty much permitted in every other zone. As staff, we feel that this is a less impactful use than, than some other uses that are currently permitted in the MG zone. The example that I wrote and for the public that may be watching, because there are none here in the audience, that, so for example, if there was a cab, cabinetry shop that had come, that wanted to come into Murray City and found a space, they would be able to operate as a permitted use. They wouldn't need to come before this body, they would just be able to apply for a business license and go on their merry way. However, if they wanted to install those same cabinets that they manufacture, then they would actually need to come before this body. I, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think that is a greater impact when you're actually taking something and going off-site than the impact of manufacturing something. So instead of just belaboring it and going on and on, we find that the proposed text amendments support the goals and objective, the general plan, by facilitating a mix of uses and appropriate transitions and buffers. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the purpose of the MG zone. And and it's been carefully considered to provide additional opportunity and a little bit more of a streamlined process for people that may be moving in, businesses moving into Murray City. So with that, we are recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed text amendments to section seventeen dot one four four dot O two O and seventeen dot one four four dot O three O as. That's the wrong one. So, thanks, Susan. It's seventeen dot one five two. I was like, that, that, that number doesn't seem right. Seventeen dot one five two dot O two O and seventeen dot one five two O three O as in your staff report.
Have to be clear, it's kind of, I put it in there, so it's kind of my fault.
It's not correct on the conclusions.
Yep. So we need to just, whoever does the motion will just need to correct that. Does anybody have questions for Zach? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just just help me relate that back to the conditional use permit we had earlier. Was that in one five two or is that in?
It's in one five two, yes. So he would have had to come here before this body for the metal manufacturing, for the metal fabrication, sorry, not manufacturing, for the fabrication. But he would not have to have had the approval for the conditional use or for the contractor side, where he takes those railings and goes and installs them into somebody's home.
So you're saying right now that does require a conditional use?
Correct.
The, the contracting portion?
Correct.
Okay, so we.
And a lot of times, a lot of times what happens here is you'll get like general contractors, right? So these are just people that come in and, for example, I actually hired a general contractor from Murray to redo my house. And he actually found out halfway through, he didn't have a business license. So.
Way to do your research.
Yeah, I know, right? But, but I helped him get through that. And that, that unit actually already had a conditional use for a contractor, so you didn't have to see him, which would have been terribly embarrassing if I had to bring that before you and be like, yeah, I'm working with this, I have to, I have to recuse myself, I'm working with this guy. So it's a, what he really does is just organize other contractors. He organizes the electricians, the, the, you know, plumbers, everything like that, that honestly have businesses outside Murray. But because he is a contractor and has a contractor's license, that automatically flags at the business license that says, check for a conditional use. And if they don't, if that unit or whatever doesn't have one, then they have to come before us.
All the examples I can think of and the examples you've given seem very straightforward, but why was this originally made a conditional use? Are there contractors in which they bring their business into the site that I can't think of?
This code was written in probably nineteen eighty-two. And so here, here's how things have kind of changed. Back in the day, I don't know exactly when, it was before I really became a planner, conditional uses were a way to pretty much tell people no. Was, was an easy way to tell people no, that it wasn't appropriate, for no other reason than just to say it wasn't appropriate.
What about contractors did we not like in eighty-two?
That's a great question. I, I wasn't born. So I can't tell you.
I mean, that's still, I respect that you weren't born, but I think your parents were pretty smart people. What am I missing? Did things just change in what we define as a contractor now, now?
So, I mean, in a lot of instances, so the planning, planning commissions writ large had a lot more leeway in what they could say. It wasn't before, like it is now, where this is an administrative action, if it meets the code, you approve. They could say, oh, I don't like that you do this and this, you must do something else. I can't think of any examples. But I, I can try and find you some minutes that are pretty blatant. They don't like that you have ten feet of landscaping, even though the code says you have to have ten feet of landscaping. I think you need to have twelve feet of landscaping, so let me, yeah. And it was, it was a way for control. Because permitted uses were just permitted. Conditional uses was a way for control.
So you're saying in the past, most contractors were women and the men on the committee didn't like the women, so they would say no because I was a woman?
Yes.
Still trying to figure out what the.
Pretty much, no. It's just that it's, it was a different time. And, and these codes have not been updated in a very long time. And hold on to your seat, Lisa Milkovich, because I am coming after these codes hard next year, so, for a lot of different things.
Just on the, generally what you said, you don't think there ought to be conditional uses for anything?
No, not at all. There should be conditional uses for certain things, like metal fabrication. Because there are those instances where we. Because there are those instances where we need to verify the, the fire department. I mean, they still look at it. The fire department needs to look at those things. But in general, yeah, there should be conditional uses in a lot of places. But contractors in a manufacturing zone, no, I don't think it should be a conditional use. Contractors in, well, let's even, let's even go a step further. I will even change that, or even state that contractors are allowed in residential zones as a, as a major home occupation that does not have to come before this body if they get signatures for people around them. We've had a couple that have come before here cuz they can't get those signatures, but they're allowed in residential zones. And but, and they don't have to do anything. They, they don't pay an application fee when they do the major home occupation. They just come in here, they tell you why they couldn't get signatures, and they move on about their day. Here, we, we require them to provide us a site plan, a floor plan, a narrative of what their, what their operations are like. And then we go through the public hearing process. It really delays people from starting, kind of moving their business to Murray. It's, it, it, we've been told numerous times that it's just slowed down, slowed down everything. And then I tend to agree. There's a lot of times where I think things do need to be slowed down and need to be looked at a little bit more in depth. But in this particular case, I don't, I don't think so.
So, so we can't come up, um, it's money and time. So we can't come up with a scenario in which a contractor would be bringing their clients into the facility?
And if they did?
Well, yeah.
Well, I guess changing the practice on site, is what I'm saying. Cuz currently, how we're describing contractors is what's happening on site, we don't have a problem with. It's when they go to sell their product. And so that's their product, so we shouldn't have a concern. Is there any other scenario?
What, what do you mean? I, 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 I don't, I apologize, I don't understand.
But I guess you've answered my question to the extent you can. I'm just looking for why there would be a concern to have a contractor on site cuz every scenario we've described makes perfect sense. So I'm still looking for why this law was created and what concern I should be concerned about.
In all honesty, it's be- it's because control. It, it was, it was a control mechanism. Conditional uses have throughout time been a can, a control, um, mechanism.
I have a comment and then a question.
Sure.
I guess my comment would be, um, if you look at these other permitted uses, um, you know, manufacturing is probably more of an impact to the surrounding area than a, a contractor would be. So I don't, I don't have any issue with adding it. My question is somewhat related, but not exactly related. So when we have a conditional use come before this body, like the one previous where it was metal fabrication, they also, I mean, they would probably qualify for multiple conditional uses, right? Cuz just like we just said, they would have had to apply for the contractor or subcontractor.
Yeah.
So-
On your thing, yeah, it actually lists both. It listed both land use codes, thirty-four ninety-four and sixty-six hundred.
It did on the, on that. Oh, okay. I didn't even notice that. So, thank you.
Uh, should be on your coverage.
It's okay, keep asking.
I, I have no other questions. Perfect. So in, in theory, you could have multiple conditional uses and we just do it all as one approval?
Yeah.
Cool.
What, what about a situation where you've got a, somebody that's a construction contractor that doesn't do any of the work on site, but they may have equipment or trucks or or whatever, uh, that may have some impact to the, to the site more than, they're, they're not just doing the business or the contractual work, they, but some of the, the construction.
Sure. Um, so they, uh, there shouldn't, there's a different land use code for actually constructing things. I mean, that's, that's manufacturing, right?
Well, yeah, that's manufacturing, but-
And, and so-
Doing offsite construction, but they still have the equipment necessary to do it. That could be anything. I mean, you could be talking about cranes and-
Yes. But currently, um, for example, wagstaff crane, I believe, is a permitted use. Um, crane storage, vehicle storage, um, is a permitted use in the MG zone. Um, equipment storage in general, tow yards, um, pretty much go down, go along Third West, north of forty-five hundred South, and you will see the epitome of the MG zone. It's, it's cranes, storage units, tow yards, concrete manufacturing.
And you're saying all those are just permitted uses?
Those are permitted uses. So by storing, by some, by a contractor coming in and storing some trucks and some construction equipment, I don't think that's an im- that is, that does not rise to the same impact level as somebody that would be doing, I don't know, building office machines or, yeah, constructing railroads. I'm just looking at some of the things here in the, in the, yeah. Yeah, so the, the greater sixty-six, the, the greater, so all these land use codes, codes are associated with a certain kind of broader category. And the six thousands are considered quote unquote services. So these are service industries, where anything in the twos and threes are your heavy industrial and manufacturing type uses. Which you'll notice in the con- in the conditional uses, we have a lot more two thousands and three thousands as opposed to, yeah. And your fifty-five hundreds are retail, if you're curious. Or thousands.
Are there more questions for Zach? Okay, we can continue to have a discussion or we can entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the planning commission-
Do we need public comment?
Oh, we, we do. We do. We haven't done that, right?
Do we?
Yes, we do, sorry. Let's do that real quick. Um, I'm gonna open up the public comment period. So there is, um, nobody here. So if you are watching remotely, we'll give you a little bit to email your comment to planningcommission@murray.utah.gov.
I was used to being on my own iPad, so I was about to swipe up and go to YouTube and see the stream and see if anybody had commented, um, to see if anybody was watching, cuz that's what I do. But no comments.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment period. And now we could entertain a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that, uh, the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed text amendments to sections seventeen dot one five two dot zero two zero and seventeen dot one five two dot zero three zero.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Nay. Is there a second? I'll second it. We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. Let's do a roll call vote.
Uh, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson.
Yes. Congratulations, Zach.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to number seven. Zach as well.
Yes. So, um, this one is amending a bunch of sec- sections. Um, the GEO zone, the MG zone, I believe the CD zone, and some others. Um, sorry, let me look at it. Oh, GEO, yeah. Okay. I apologize, I didn't write this one. Susan actually had a really exciting planning commission planned for Draper. She is a planning commission in Draper. I don't know if you guys know that, but, um, she had an exciting one she wanted to attend, so I told her I'd cover her stuff for tonight. Um, so this is repealing the land use code one-one-one-three, which is single family attached to non-residential. Um, this has been, uh, kind of a thorn in the city's side for a number of years, um, because it's hard, we don't have a definition of what that really means. Um, how it's been interpreted, uh, for many years is that it's kind of a caretaker residence. So if you guys remember, um, older like, uh, storage facilities used to have like somebody on site living, but also managed the, um, managed the business as well. Um, that's how it had been traditionally interpreted. Um, and then over the course of a year to now, um, people have, have kind of changed that a- and have been challenging that to mean more of just anything. Um, and, and there's no real definition on what that means. Um, we still do, we, we do have definitions for like live work, um, like in our TOD zones. Uh, that's what this kind of would get confused with is as a, like a live work residence. Um, and it's not what it was intended to be. And so we are proposing removing it, um, from these commercial zones currently. Because, yeah, it's caused a lot of headache. And that's really all I have to say on the matter. I'm happy to take questions.
So this says that it would get confused with home occupation businesses-
Correct.
We know are like in residential uses. So they were like in a manufacturing zone and wanting to run a business from a place that they were living in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's actually exactly one of the things that happened, is that somebody was living in one of these zones, um, which the home occupation code says that the home occupation has to happen in a residential zone. I know I just said use code zones, and that's gonna confuse the living daylights out of everyone, is even me. Um, but yeah, there are home occupations which are only allowed to happen in residential zones. And then, um, but this was being construed to allow for that.
So if someone has a, a random house in a MG zone that they are living in, they're not allowed to do a business from it?
Correct.
Okay.
So because, and I'll, and I'll explain that. Because the single family residential use that's being used there is a non-conforming use. That means that the zone has changed and the city, because that zone has changed, has anticipated that that use is and will go away at some point. It's allowed to maintain and be used as a single family residence or whatever, what have you, for any amount of time, as long as it's continually used. Um, however, once you abandon that use, which, um, abandon is one year of non- of not being used as a single family dwelling, then it goes away. That, that protection goes away, has to come up to current zoning. Um, so any non-conforming use needs to, it's anticipated to go away.
So what about if it was written for, like you said, um, caretaker residence or something? Is that something that we don't like have storage units that have a, a resident or a caretaker anymore, or they're, or we just don't want those?
Um, if they exist currently, I don't think we have any that exist currently anymore. Um, they would be, then they would become non-conforming and still allowed to continue.
Okay.
Um, as long as that use is not abandoned.
But moving forward, we wouldn't want a storage unit that had a-
Correct. And typically, that's not the business model. The storage companies are, yeah. They've, they've moved to more automatic doors and paying your bill online. So that's typically what they-
And like big buildings.
Yeah, big blocks.
I'm really, I was nervous when I first saw this because, um, it was one thing that I really liked about the MCCD, which I know maybe things are changing in the MCCD, but that, that in those zones, that wouldn't, it doesn't apply.
That's not applied to these zones. No, we still have live work units, yeah. This is just specifically kind of those strictly commercial zones. So the GEO, um, CD, MG, and there's one more. I just can't think of-
CN.
CN, yes, commercial neighborhood.
So I, I do, I have a question.
Sure.
So I I'm trying to formulate my question.
That's fine. Does anybody else have questions while I'm forming?
I've been to cities where, um, people often live in their business. And I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. Um, and I know we have the live work, you know, whatever that's called, but the-
Yeah, it's live work.
And, and that's, that's permitted where? Where do we have live work at?
We have live work in all of our mixed use codes.
Okay.
So, you know, TOD, MCCD, MCMU, um, all those codes. And then in every single fam- any, sorry, any residential zone, um, so R one-eight, R one-six,
Okay.
Um, RM zones, um, you are allowed to have a home-based business. It, it's just that, it, it's been that confusion of, of we don't, it, it's been kind of that, uh, the home-based business is not really what these zones are meant for.
Okay, so rundown, real quick. Sorry, I'm gonna put you on the spot again.
You're good.
I'm gonna go through each of these zones. GEO, what would generally be in a GEO zone?
So those are, so the, the, the GEO zone is general office. So it should be office uses.
Right. So would that be a doctor's office?
Doctor's office is, um-
So if I wanted to have a doctor's office and live behind it, I couldn't do that?
Correct.
MG zone?
Manufacturing general zone.
So if I wanted to have a sewing shop in the front and live behind it, I couldn't do that?
Correct.
Okay, and then the CN zone?
Those are neighborhood commercials, so it's kind of like, come and go on Ninth East. Um, sorry, I couldn't help myself on that one.
Maverick, by the way.
What?
It's Maverick, by the way.
Oh, yeah, now it's Maverick. It will, have they changed the sign in?
No, no.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, cuz they haven't applied for a sign permit. Um, so, um, but those are kind of, those are-
So if I wanted to have a neighbor corner market that I sold my fresh bread out of, I couldn't live behind it?
Correct.
Okay, and let's-
Cause in the MCCD zone. Um, uh, CD zone, right? Is that what you did? Yeah, so you couldn't have a, a dress shop and live behind it. I'm sorry.
I don't, personally, I don't see any reason we shouldn't allow people to live behind their dress shop or their bakery or their, their little, uh, physician, you know, area. I know that's not happening in Murray. I mean, I know that's, you know, we can't point to anybody doing that, but I don't see that as a bad thing.
Sure, and I completely understand that. Um, I think it's just because of where we're at right now, um, and the way it's been applied. Um, it's, it's these land use codes are very particular on how they read and how they're interpreted. And, um, this is Zach's pontificating, what, six point O today? Um, my goal is to eventually eliminate these land use codes. Um, only two cities in, in the state use this type of, um, way of classifying land uses. Um, then we're one, so, um-
Tell us who the other one is, just so I know.
Provo.
Provo.
But they use, they're, they use theirs a lot more broadly. Um, they use the broad numbers, which is like sixty-six hundred, cuz there's usually like sixty-six hundred through sixty-six ninety-nine. Um, and there's a whole list of every type of contractor you could possibly think of. Um, they use theirs more broadly. Um, but anyway, that gets kind of off topic. These codes are, are difficult because I, I, to a point, agree. Um, I am all about mixed use, right? Like, that's literally what it is. But the, they have, the way that our, our one, our home occupation biz- our code reads is, causes conflict with this code. And, um, it's, it's just, it's been a real, it, it's honestly been a nightmare to try to keep- Keep, we've had two appeals from it. Um, and. Yeah.
Could could we not just instead of redlining these, just put live work?
No, because that land use code is tied to a different document. Um.
Could we not make a new document, call it live work two point oh and tie it to this?
Possibly.
Okay.
Possibly, but we would need to. Um, we would have to change. I- it's outside the scope of what this application is from the city. It would be us amending the land use code.
Sure.
As opposed to.
It would be more difficult, is what you're saying.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, i- i- it would require us to do, instead of process this one as a repeal.
Sure.
You would, we would come in and change what the land use code one-one-one-three states.
Oh, sure, okay.
So here, I can I can show you exactly what the land use code looks like because I have it up. Um, cause when I meet with people. So. You guys do have a copy of this somewhere buried in your houses, cause we gave you.
I never got one, but I I came in during COVID.
Oh, that's.
No one could touch me or come to my house or anything.
So one thousand, the the one thousand codes are living areas, eleven hundred are household units. So we have single-family dwellings, we have single-family dwelling attached. Um, here we go. Single-family dwelling attached to a commercial, industrial, or other non-residential use. Dwelling unit can be under, over, in front, behind, or beside non-residential use in the structure. So here's where we have had difficulties. So actually, to go back to your question. Um, let's take the the dress shop because I just love the idea of you owning a dress shop.
Yep.
Um, so is, if you lived behind it. It would have to be attached. Th- that's that's one of the key words.
Sure.
It would have to be attached to that thing. You would have to do both the shop and. Like you have a shop in the front and like your kitchen behind like a wall.
Yes.
So it's like it's in that instance.
Yep.
As opposed to being more of a of a. Kind of like these mixed use. Ideas where I don't have them. Anyway, there's these terribly hand look, looks like they're hands.
Just getting into the good ones right there. We need more of that.
Yeah, there we go. But anyway, you get you get kind of the idea. It's then one of one of the examples um. Was. Here, I'm getting, I should have just included slides. I apologize. So I think it was. Something that's apparently not gonna load. But either way, so it was a single-family home in the front. And it was a detached, single-family home, right? And then behind it, not attached to it, was a um shop. Like a a a big storage shed shop thing. And they wanted to have somebody, that owner wanted to rent out the single-family dwelling. But then keep his machine shop in the back. And that's where we came in and said that land use code doesn't apply that way. It needs to be attached. And that's that's one instance of where it became a problem.
Can I shift gears just a little bit?
Please.
Is there a reason why we didn't consider a residential neighborhood business in this discussion?
Is it in there?
It is not in there.
Ah, it's not in there, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
That's why we didn't, that's why we didn't include it. Susan wrote this report, so you know it's thorough, so.
So we can own the dress shop in RB.
Yeah, just put it in there.
Sure, it's actually a nice place for it. That would be a nice place for it, but um, I, you would never be able to have in Murray a corner bakery. I mean, I.
Sure you could.
I mean, I'm not gonna.
In the TOD and in the MCCD and the CMU, where you want those.
But but Super App would never be able to operate again.
Yeah.
Look, I I don't want to, I don't want to um. What my statement I'm gonna make is I am not saying that I love Europe any more than I love Murray, cause I don't. But I do like the idea of me walking to the na- the corner store and buying some. Sour dough bread from the family that live behind the shop.
Sure.
And I don't like the idea of taking that ability away. I understand that it may be ambiguous and maybe we need to change what it's, what's said there. But um, housing pricing is going up, we all know that.
Yes.
This will just take away more places that people could live. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, I I don't disagree with you in that aspect. Um. That.
We, you're right, we could do this in other zones, but we're taking it away from zones that currently you could do it in.
Yeah, I mean, and and it really, it comes down, th- th- there's multiple facets as to why, you know. Also, you know, some of these, like this one specifically, two, two-two-five, this is the one I was talking about. Where they had the the home in front and kind of a shop in the back. Um, typically, these are not very well-kept dwellings.
No, I I I understand the issue and I understand that, you know, we we don't wanna have, you know. So uh, people dwelling in si- a situation where it would be not great to dwell in, right? I understand that. Um, and so I I get that.
And I think, you know, you're more, you guys are, i- if if you guys decide that maybe it's not appropriate in the MG zone, but maybe it's appropriate. Maybe it's appropriate in the CD zone or whatever.
That's kind of where I'm leaning, I think, a little bit.
That is definitely within your purview. You can amend that. That's what these these kind of actions are for.
Because I think to your point, um. That is, he, you know, in lots of situations, a way that people have been able to have affordable place to live is also. Slash the places that they work, right? And so they can make double use out of that. And I would. Feel like that would be the most appropriate in the CD zone, that somebody could. Run a business and live either above and behind. And I think, like, maybe some of those, like, I know there's one that's like. Maybe on forty-eighth that had like a an eye doctor place and then like an apartment behind it or something, right? So, um, I think if we are trying to. Open up affordable ways that people could live and work in the city. I think the CD zone would be the. Most logical place to do it. I don't know, I mean, MG and GO, I, those feel to me like they would. Um. Those uses conflict a little bit and kind of cause more. Problems, because all I think all the examples that you're using are like, yeah, you'd you'd have a dry cleaner. Or something that'd be a permitted use in a in a CD zone and have a way to be able to to live there also.
You said there, there's other zones that have. That do allow this kind of situation or other of, yeah, other zones, correct?
Yeah, the it's ma- mainly our mixed use zones, yep. So it would be those orangey colors on your map.
And those are a little bit different, I think, than what specifically Chair Pearson is talking about, because those would be. I mean, often they have higher densities, right, and are mixed uses. So they would be a commercial maybe, and then you have an apartment above, but it's not a. It's, yeah, like a, yeah, single business, single residence.
Right.
Yeah, so it doesn't directly, I feel like that is not quite the right. Solution to what what we're talking about.
Just looking at the map of the.
Your mic's.
I had it on. Um, looking at the map and with some of the other comments that have made, been made. I think the only part of this that I, at least tonight, I'd be comfortable in churning is just in the manuf- MG. And not the CDCN or GO.
Do we have any idea how many non-conforming uses exist in these zones currently?
No. But I mean, if if that's something you guys want some more information on, we can, again, we can always table this too. Um, yeah, that's up to you. If you want some more data, if you want some more information, we can, we can look into that a little bit more too.
Would it be helpful to approve just part of it and maybe table the rest? Or do you wanna just keep it all together?
Um. So taking action in any form would require to to at least deal with part of it. So I mean, you could amend amend it and say, you know. Like you guys were talking about doing, uh, taking it out of the MG, but leaving it on for the other ones. Um, and then we can revisit those other ones down the road. Um, or, you know, even at the next meeting, whatever, it would just be a new agenda, a a a new text amendment. Um, from from our side, from staff's side.
But we could still just table the item altogether.
You could, and we can do a little bit more research on it too.
You said you'd like to get away from you, the land use code approach. And maybe if I understood where you were thinking of going would make me a little more comfortable with doing this, or not.
Um, i- it's 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 a, it's really complex to kind of go over at this point, I think. Um, right now, the land use code is the law of the land, so that's what we have to work within. That was me just kind of pontificating on things that I've been trying to.
Well, okay, eh, for instance, how do other cities, if Provo and Murray are the only places that do this. How do other cities handle this kind of?
Like this, this specific, this specific code, they pretty much don't allow it. Th- I I don't think a city. A- again, I haven't done the research on it, so that's something that could be done. Um, we could see if that's a thing. Um, you don't hear of this thing. You don't hear of this type of use very often. Um, it's a unique land use code. That I think was intended to be used, kind of how I explained at the beginning, kind of as a caretaker residence. Um.
I guess I disagree with that a little bit. I I can think of a number of examples where I've seen this before. And maybe it's just been a matter of zoning. But eh, well, frankly, I I I have seen a number of places where you have a business and a residence together. And I guess it seems like we're excluding that as a possibility. I'm sure I'm entirely comfortable with that.
Yeah, a- and we can. Definitely, I mean, I do. It's entirely up to you guys, where you guys decide you want to, what you want to do.
I mean, I I think I would be comfortable voting how it is if we want. I would be comfortable if someone wanted to change it. Um, I know we're probably talking about something that probably is not gonna happen much, so I know we're. Ha- having a long discussion about something that um.
Wait until the seventh.
Probably not gonna be used that often.
Yeah.
But to the few people that affects it matters. I have a friend that owns business and lives in it, Bingham. Downtown Bingham, I don't know if it's.
So the dress shop?
No.
Here's Jake wants to get, he he wants to get in on, he wants to be a partner in that dress shop.
I I I appreciate more data to know how many people we're affecting.
I mean, if, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I guess I'm kind of feeling like. If we do suddenly have a dema- a lot of demand for people coming in and wanting to build on State Street. A place that they run a restaurant out of and live out of or whatever. And that starts happening, I guess we could relook at this code. I mean, it's definitely not something that. We're running into a lot right now. There's not a lot of demand for it, but I do think, and I'm not a planner, so I don't know, but like. As cities grow and people get more desperate for places to live, these kind of. Those, those kind of uses do grow more.
Sure.
Right, so so we're maybe not there yet, and so maybe we.
But I think we're providing those growth opportunities in our mixed use zones. I think that's where. That intensification of use is beginning to happen and where you're seeing those kind of things.
Yeah.
And you know, the middle of State Street in between one and Larry H Miller's pieces of property, probably not gonna see that, and they're probably not gonna see that property away.
Maybe not right there, but eh 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 as other things do redevelop, you know, like what about further down, you know, in front of um. Burlington Coat Factory, and somebody wants to put, you know, Burlington Coat Factory is empty, and that gets divided up, and they want to.
Yeah.
Have a business they wanna.
Yeah, I mean, the the ShopCo property, even though it's been redeveloped, I think there's still a lot of work to be done on that property.
Right, and so so saying, I don't know, that that's the only zone I feel like would, we would. Cause I do, I understand that this is an allowed use in the MCCD, and maybe it's, or sorry, in the mixed use, which is also the MCCD. And I think that that is kind of where my brain keeps going, is like if you ran, I don't know, a small something. And then lived upstairs.
Dress shop.
A small dress shop. I don't know why I keep going to like dry cleaners or something like what other cities do, I don't know.
Yeah.
But um, that the bigger MCC, the the bigger mixed use zones. I don't know, like, if this, these one-off kind of littler, single-family situations. If that's exactly the right fit, so I don't, but like I said, like, maybe we just address that if we start having. Like, people that are interested in that, I don't know.
So somebody came in and wanted to put a development in along State Street in the CD zone. That included businesses on the bottom floor and residential above that.
That would not be this use.
Yeah, that would be a different.
That would be a different type of.
Something on State Street, right, you know, right here in, you know, um, where is this spot that wouldn't empty?
That he was, the house, besides.
Yeah, but that's in the MCCDs. Um. Yeah, I'm trying to think of like an example of something that would turn over, but it, you know, would maybe have like a small, a small business.
Here you go. Um.
That's the one that was.
That's the, that's the detached one?
Well, this is actually one that's just down the street, but um, I think this one's actually been converted completely to. Red uh, business, but.
And this is the MG zone, right?
Yeah.
Which is so tricky, cause that looks like total residential on both sides.
Yeah, um, like, this, this is a non-conforming use duplex, like, it it exists. Um, in that zone. Um.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have kind of these industrial. See, these are, these are existing s- um, single families. Uh.
All these non-conforming uses are just grandfathered in from an earlier zone.
Correct, yep. Um, actually, at one point, um, I think it was back again. The last time we did a really major zoning code update was in the eighties. Um, like when this was completely overhauled. Um, it was in the eighties, and before that. Um, they actually allowed housing in the MG zone, um, single-family residential housing. Um, actually, even up until, I think in sometime in the two thousands, cause this. This development is a multifamily housing and is also allowed in the MG zone, was allowed in the MG zone, sorry, that that.
But my understanding is that this caused lots of problems to have those things integrated like that, right? Like, it's hard. Cause, you know, then you get actual manufacturing businesses going in and neighbors being upset. So I I, uh, yeah, on the one hand, I totally understand it, and I think it's good. But I don't know, I don't know if we're like. Stifling future people that need that.
Ned, how do you feel? I haven't heard from you.
I'm digesting. This is all great. I think about where I grew up, there's still plenty of places of uh. Bakery with somebody living above, um, and all sorts of other non-conforming uses in residential. non-conforming uses in residential areas. Little grocery store, small gas station, way less than six hundred feet from, uh, residentials. Um, but I've not seen any of that today.
Especially here.
Development, big development, you know, thirty houses go in, once in a while you'll get two, three, maybe a half a dozen uh, in a little gated street, um, and I not sure I see this in the future, not sure that and like, uh, Merrick said, maybe it comes back and if it does strongly come back, uh, which it could, we get a lot of space that can get redeveloped. Ninety-nine percent of State Street perhaps, uh, and maybe it comes back and, and we address it in the future. But I'm not, I'm, I don't see it today.
I, I agree. My question is, just cuz we don't see it, should we then take away the ability for someone to do it?
There's always ability, Mr. Chairman. All you do is you come to the Planning Commission and you give a request, and we've done it. We've changed code for developers.
Individual, individual users.
I agree, but we're, I agree. No, it's easier if it's in the code, but, um, we've got a great planning staff and, and they're gonna tell somebody who comes in and says, wanna do this, well, the code doesn't say that, but if you wanna go ahead and try to change the code through Planning Commission and the City Council, go ahead and do it, and we've done it already. Just in the last few years, we've done it.
So here's the question I have, so as a city, should our, should our thinking be we should allow people to do what they want with their land as much as possible unless it's causing an issue, cuz that's what I kind of think. And unless we can point to an issue, which I don't think there is one, I mean, I understand there was a, we had to clarify some stuff, but I don't see the issue, so that's why I'm leaning towards we shouldn't take away someone's freedom to do with their land what they want unless it's an issue, unless it's affecting their neighbors or something, and I don't think it does. I think if there's a bakery and someone's living behind it, that would be way better than just the bakery, but that's just me.
Only if you despise that smell of fresh bread in the morning.
It's true.
Some people do.
You're gonna gain weight.
Some people do.
That's just my opinion, I mean.
I agree with that.
I don't have strong feelings on this, other than I'm more standing on a, um, just a, uh.
Property rights.
Yeah, property rights, yeah, exactly.
Fine, and that's fine.
Like that of. On Forty-Fifth, there was a house that they converted into, I think, like an Airbnb, like Crystal Shop place?
Yes.
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 Yes, and they, she lived there, right? She, part, part of it's gonna be her residence and part of it was gonna be Crystal Shop slash. Yeah, so that, that's in the CD zone. Now, we rezoned that, I think, to be CD zone when she came, and so now we would just be like, yes, you can have the business.
Now a different use code.
Okay.
Sorry, that complicates it even more.
Shop, right, if it was just her Crystal Shop and it, part of her house or whatever, like, she would now only be able to do the shop and not be able to have a residence.
Correct. If she were to come before us now.
Now, if we change it.
Can you tell me one example where it had been an issue, but is this really an issue from your standpoint? Why do we need to change it?
I think it provides clarity.
It does help.
Is that the only reason?
It does help provide clarity, um, it's been quite i- i- it's been a lot over the past couple months, dealing with a few, a few um, residents that have wanted to challenge how we've traditionally taken it, um. I, I can't speak to it a lot more, uh, cuz I've kind of been separated from that. Um, Susan has dealt with, with this, with that a lot, um, in those interpretations. Um, I haven't been as involved with it.
You mentioned a one place where that house had a detached shop behind. And that you said that this wouldn't apply because it wasn't attached, what?
Right.
What? Is there something else that covers that, or is it not allowed?
Not allowed. But that took.
That almost seems like a more optimal situation than if it was attached.
Yeah, I mean, and that, again, that's kind of that clarity thing, right, is that, um, so one of the aspects of that was, um, I'm getting kind of too into the weeds with it, but um, one of the things they wanted to do was they, what they had expressed, what that homeowner expressed to me was that they wanted to do storage of RV vehicles on that property and live on the property. So then that comes up to, well, how do you attach that, that non-residential piece? How do you attach a storage use to, when it's not covered, it's just outdoor storage, right? It's not a garage, it's not anything like that, like a tow yard, for example, right? Uh, they just sit outside. How do you define that as attached to a single-family residential? Um, that's where some of that, um, some of that, uh, clarity was needed and part of it that came forward, because you can't really, you can't, you can't attach Harvey storage to a, to a dwelling. Um, so that's kind of the long way of getting to your answer.
I, I would say if we need to clarify the eleven thirteen code, that would be better for me, I'd probably be okay with that, and if we need someone to draw better pictures, cuz the pictures, I think, were pretty clear, but they need to be colored or something, I think we could do that too.
I mean, is anyone opposed to tabling it, bringing it back so that we can have the conversation with Susan, who's done a little more of the research on this and, and really put her through, or, or are you comfortable moving forward?
What's, well, and maybe that's what we need to do, but I'm still trying to understand if it's just a concern about the clarity, or if you're trying to prohibit a business and a with somebody living there being, um, or not allowing a business with somebody living in it.
And I think that's a great, I, I, I think, I think that's better. It's a little bit of both, I think, um, more the clarity side, I think.
Maybe, what we're worried about is the prohibiting that you. If we need to clarify it, I think that's legitimate.
Then I think, i- in my opinion, then, if, 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 if there needs to be clarification as opposed to, um, revocation, I would probably table it, let us kind of do some more research, um. It's up to you whether you wanna table it to a date certain, so like to the next meeting. Um, for these, we only have to notice, um, just affected entities, so if you want us to do a little bit more digging, um, we can kind of bring it back, uh, at, at a later date too. You don't have to be date certain on that one.
Okay, so, I mean, to answer Travis's question, I'm not opposed to tabling it, I'm not opposed to voting on it either, um, but um, what, so what would you prefer, Zach? Would you prefer us to just table it indefinitely, or, and then you could put on agenda in the future, or would you prefer us to put a date on it?
Um, I think, because, um, we haven't gotten there yet, but your next meeting's going to be pretty heavy. Um, not pretty, it's going to be very heavy, um, eh, with another tax amendment, um, that I, I think maybe either tabling it, and I don't know what the holidays looks like, so I would probably say just, if we can get it on the next one, if Susan feels comfortable getting it on the next one, we'll put it on the next one. Um, i- i- if we are gonna have a, you know, I would just say just table it for now, and we'll figure out a date.
Okay, do we need to add any specifics on come back with an information regarding, or are you clear on?
I think we're pretty, yeah, we're, we're pretty clear, and I have a feeling Susan's probably gonna come back and watch this anyway, um. So I, I'm pretty clear, I, I, I have a good understanding of what we're, what we're looking for.
Just point of order, we have not done public comment, right?
We probably.
Do we want to do that, or do we wanna hold?
I mean, you could probably.
Let's just do it, just since we did it, um, since nobody's here, um, maybe there's somebody watching that would like to make a public comment, so let's just do it. Um, so I'm gonna open up the public comment period, uh, if you are watching remotely, you need to email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And nobody is in this room, so we're gonna just wait for someone to email us for a second.
I was really excited for a minute because I did actually have an email in my, in my email box, but it wasn't, I, I was like, oh my gosh, somebody's actually paying attention to that.
They probably tuned out long ago.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's, there's nothing.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment period, and then we can, if someone wants to make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we, uh, table agenda item number seven, land use text amendment, um, for amending section seventeen dot one four four dot zero two, seventeen one dot one five two dot zero two zero, seventeen dot one five six dot zero two zero, and seventeen one dot one six zero dot zero two zero, um, until a further date, future date.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Nae, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Patterson. Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Nae.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkiewicz?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson.
Yes, okay, that is, um, tabled to a future meeting. And I thought Commissioner Nae was broken for a second, like, I thought he was looping.
My wife says the same thing all the time.
I was gonna say, Ned, hit, hit him. Okay, I think that was our last agenda item. Do we have any, um, anything else?
Um, I was just gonna tell you, next one is, i- is, it's a doozy, it's a, um, pretty much a, a, a big hefty rewrite of the subdivision ordinance, um, based on state code, um, what?
Tomorrow, um, a training session?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, yes, ULI is having a training. Oh, there's two.
I thought there was one tomorrow.
Yep, there is one tomorrow, um.
It's the one that we went to.
Yeah.
But it's here.
ULI, it's the Urban Land Institute, um, if you can come, come. Um, it starts at eight, it's like eight to one.
Attended that same one a couple of months ago, it's, it's kinda good.
Susan's pretty much hosting it, so, um. It's like, yeah, like eight to one. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't come.
Um, but then, yes, Monday, the WFRC is also going to be here, going over the, um, I think twenty fifty vision. Um, I think that's what decade they're on, I don't know, d- do you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, it's four to six PM on Monday, it's the, it's called the Wasat Front Regional Council, um, yeah, yeah, it'll be here. I don't know who set that up, nobody in this office knows who set that up, it just.
Who set up being here?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, really?
No clue, I have no clue where it came from, um, but yes, so, um, I think probably in.
It's in the, it says right here, Murray City Hall, Council Chambers.
Yep, cuz it's a big thing, yeah, a pretty big thing.
They're gonna review the refresh Wasat's choice vision for the area, map out the potential trail and open space concepts that build on the vision, and discuss ideas to collaborate, address water and housing issues. It's at four o'clock on Monday the twentieth.
Yep.
That, that's what's Wasat's Front Regional Council.
Yep, that's kind of their big, that's their big thing, is their, their vision, uh, their vision for whatever decade. They finish a decade and they immediately start the next.
If you want, I can email this to you. Okay.
But yeah, there's a heavy, heavy, heavy subdivision code to review.
Okay, great, um, is there anything else?
No.
Then we could have a motion to adjourn?
With a time.
With a time?
Motion to adjourn, seven fifty-seven.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
They were adjourned.